Not a problem Doug.
Uh, no, I, I, uh, I live in Ward 7, so we lost power. Now, we've lost power, he's got power.
You understand. I'll drink those too. You want some cabbages next time? Well, I met Alderman Donilon over there, he happened to be there too. We were hoping we weren't anticipating.
The Chair will call the July 5th, 2023 Meeting of the City Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Lesko, will you please call the role?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams. Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Notariano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Henauer.
Here.
Mayor Busher.
Here Clerk Lesko.
Madam Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you sir. I'm gonna go ahead and read the Civility Pledge. In the interest of civility, I pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others, acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community, and understanding that we each may have different ideas for achieving that objective. We did not have originally any proclamations or presentations signed up, but I am gonna ask that our Chief Utility Engineer Doug Brown come up, Scott Rogers come up, and Matt Huff please. Thank you.
Thanks Mayor. First, I just wanna make sure, you know, thank all of our CLOP crews, Ops Teams, as well as other crews all from the country to, they're just doing an outstanding job. It's, it's, it's a lot. And they're working long days, you know, seventeen hour days when they're on shift, so they're, they're giving it their all. And just, you know, the devastation though, again, I'm not gonna keep driving this in, so the, because the public just doesn't seem to understand the, the, I know, I know they're, you know, they're frustrated, get that, but the devastation for the widespread across our community is, you know, we just haven't seen that in decades with this kind of the wide scope and the breadth of it. And it's terrible to be without power for basically almost a week. It really is. And, I mean, we're gonna work tirelessly until we get everybody back on. And we just ask everyone to stay respectful, patient, but I also wanna thank the elected officials too, everywhere, for understanding just how difficult the situation is and supporting our employees for the job that they are doing. And just a reminder, I wanna kinda get out there, is that just keep watching the weather. Our electric grid remains fragile. Strong winds or storms can still cause outages. We are concerned about what we are having tonight, but it looks like it might bypass us a little bit, but there was still some pretty good winds out there that could basically cause some of the tree limbs that are already weakened to fall onto the power lines. Actually, even if no wind, the tree limbs are still weakened, they could still fall on the power lines at some unknown moment. And, and the customer would lose power. One other thing too, is that, you know, customers like, well, hey, I had power, then I went, went back off. Well, sometimes when we're doing repairs, we do have to take customers back off to fix something and then put them back on. And we'll try to minimize that as much as we can. Like yesterday, we also had a vehicle hit a pole in an insulator failure yesterday afternoon, and basically it dumped a lot of customers, especially on the MacArthur substation. It took, you know, a few hours just to get that fixed. So there's still those kinds of things that are gonna happen that take resources away from the restoration efforts. I think it knocked like about, like thirty-two hundred out. Right? Yeah. So, just some re-numbers again, in the first forty-eight hours, we restored about thirty thousand. We projected, basically, seven thousand would be out of power by the end of yesterday, and we met that. Now, we are at about forty-eight hundred customers. So even at the press conference, we were about fifty-two hundred. We picked up four hundred just in about an hour and a half. And now we have our outage locations for repairs of about three hundred and ninety. That will slow down some. As, as we get further along, the repairs will be smaller and fewer in between to, to get them done. But we are still on target for thirty-five hundred remaining out of outage by the end of Friday, and a thousand remaining out of outage by the end of Sunday, and we're hoping to beat that. You know, we're still, again, prioritizing circuits with the largest amount of customers first, but we're also trying to coordinate by quadrant, so we don't necessarily want crews driving across town like that, so we're trying to make sure that we do things efficiently as well. Just remember the severity of the damage with this, it's, it is impossible to provide estimates for everybody for their areas. It's impossible. The damage is so widespread. We're still walking down circuits, you know, at the individual levels and assessing what those are, and, and then organizing the tickets for those repairs, and then we assign crews to those. But from the, from the start, we pulled out all the stops, put out requests for additional crews, and we've received the help, you know, as those crews become available. They don't necessarily, they volunteer, but they might not be ready till two days, three days later. But we're, we're taking on as soon as we can. I'm gonna have Matt Huff here, here soon, really discuss the complexity of that. But we have a hundred and thirty-three additional personnel on site with a hundred and twelve trucks from various areas throughout the country. CLOP has seventy-five personnel and fifty trucks, so that's over two hundred in the people in the field trying to restore power, so we've more than doubled our numbers, and we have more arriving tomorrow. I think from Ameren and Ellie Myers, or is Ellie Myers today?
Ellie Myers is here.
Okay. So, actually, we had some already arrive that are beyond these numbers today. Another item that we've done instituted, and this is for residential customers only, because this is the only way we can handle it, but we've contacted all the electrical contractors that are licensed in the city of Springfield notifying them that we will provide them with a meter lock key if they provide a deposit. This will allow them to disconnect the overhead service from the weatherhead, this is on the person's house, on their meter, and reconnect it to our lines. This will help us and the customers, due to the volume of calls we are receiving, to reconnect services and not take away from the other restoration efforts. Customers should ask their contractor if they have a meter lock key if they want to be able to speed up their service reconnection. And I'll email this to everybody here after the meeting too, okay? Remember though, that the complexity of the repairs and the weather will affect the estimates that we've been given. And the, check the CLOP website for outage updates as well as social media, and we'll try to get those, you know, updated on a daily basis and more often as time allows. So, Scott, you wanna talk about a couple things?
So one, one of the biggest complaints we've had from the public is our outage map. And in reality, the public facing outage map, it is not designed for an outage this big, and we'll be honest. I don't know that the few that have seen, I know the mayor's seen it, you look at our internal outage map, even then, you have to drill down to be able to see those outages. And so I know there's a lot of frustration, my house isn't showing up. The public facing one, just if we put that much detail out, out there, they would get mired in the amount of information that's on it. So we try to simplify it. We will go back and look and see if there's a way we can improve this, but there's no way we're gonna do it today. So it's just something that's out there. We've had over seventy thousand phone calls since it started in trying to manage that. The way our map is set up, it is predictive. I think Doug covered some of this a little bit yesterday. It's predictive in nature, so it's artificial AI if you wanna call it that. And, and so that's some of the issues we've had. That's one of the reasons we put out the public appeal after we got all the feeders back on. If your house is still out and not seeing it, call us. I know there's been a lot of frustration over that. That's trying to help. We've made some changes to the predictive nature, and we're just trying to capture all that. So I know it's been frustrating. We will go back and look at it, see what we can do better, and any more information we can get to the public to help them. But it, it's been frustrating on our side too, trust us, so. That was all I had. So Matt, you wanna cover some of the?
Yeah, so.
They short.
For those of you that haven't met me, my name's Matt Huff. I'm the Superintendent of Distribution and General Services here for C W L P. And I've worked here since nineteen ninety-nine, so it's been a great place to work, and thank you for having me. So just in, in the start of things in a storm like this, you know, we're generally used to outages and large-scale outages and things that happen. But then as we discover how bad it is and the extent of the damage and how spread out it is, we have to start to ramp up a lot of different things. And the first thing we ramp up is our supervision and our operations personnel. And then we start to ramp up our manpower and our labor in the field. And then when we realize we have to assess more, that's when we bring in more people and smaller crews and single, and single people to go out and start looking at these things and figure out what's wrong. So, about the time that we realized that this was as bad as it was, by this time, there maybe have been one or two people at a house or down a street or down an alley looking at different things to feed information back to our operations center so we can determine where we need to start and where we need to put most manpower and get the most people on that we can. At that point, we start calling all of our, all of our different contacts for contractors. We call APPA, which is the American Public Power Association, and they provide us assistance through other municipalities. And then we also have people on contract that we can bring in pretty locally. So from there, we have to take our crews that normally restore everyone's power, and we have to bring all of those people up a level in the organization chart. And so we're taking all of our people and making them leaders. And they're gonna lead all these contract crews, these hundred and forty people that we bring in from out of town. They're out there taking them around right now, showing them the areas and keeping them safe and getting the lights on. So once they get to the job site and you see trucks out there working and things like this, it is a process. This thing that happened from MacArthur yesterday that was the three thousand people, just to put it into perspective, that was twenty minutes worth of work, but it was two hours of safety. And so when we're talking about how long things take, these crews get to the job site, and the first thing they have to do is provide for their own safety and provide for the safety of the public. So to make sure lines are de-energized, and to do that, sometimes that means driving from Shields to Chatham and making sure everything's safe and get the work done. While they're around, you know, we kinda talk about the public coming out and talking to them and things like this. It's always great to see faces, and it's always great to shake hands, but to be honest, it kinda slows them down. So the best thing the public can do, if you have any advice for them, is say thank you and, and just, just move on. That way it doesn't slow them down. One little problem we've had in the past and recently, report malicious activity. Some people like to roll up this wire and take it with them, and we need it. So if, if you can pass anything on to people, please do that. So again, like they were talking, we try to work with our Ops Center, and we wanna put these largest outages at the top, but we also don't wanna focus on one area of the city, so we're looking at all of the outages on quadrant based on the, the largest outage that we have. And then we also try to prioritize, you know, special interest things like hospitals, nursing homes, retirement centers, all these things, intersections, intersections, traffic lights, tornado sirens, all of those things go into consideration. So there's just one thing I wanna say about the city of Springfield and City Water, Light and Power. I've worked here a long time, and everyone in this room and everyone in this city should be very proud of the employees. People are putting in a lot of work.
Absolutely.
And they don't see their house in the daylight. So if you see them, tell them thanks. Do you have any questions?
It looks like we have some that are signed up to speak. Doug, are you done? Okay. Alderwoman Notariano.
Thank you Mayor. So I have a map question. Yeah, and so I had the issue yesterday and today where several people called me and said they were in outage and they checked the map recently, and it said they weren't, and then they called the call center, and the folks at the call center said that they were not in an outage when they were sitting in their house and in an outage.
So some of that is what I was talking about, the predictive nature. So we've been trying to get those that are taking calls to not argue with people, not tell them no. Just say, okay, we'll take your information, give it back. So what happens at that point, if the predictive nature doesn't show that house in outage, and it is, it could be a service at their house. It could be multitude of different things. So what we're trying to do is just get them to take the information, give the address and the name, get it to the trouble clerk, they'll put it in the system, and then it will show that one house in outage. Sometimes the predictive nature, what, the other thing we'll see sometimes is when you do that, the way it rolls outages up, if you get multiples, then you also end up, and what we're trying, one of the battles we're having with this being so big, is you do that, then it starts predicting a larger number of people out when you get two or three phone calls in the same area. So then the numbers get inflated. So then we try to stop that, and then the numbers go the other way. So it's, it's a very delicate balance with an outage this big going back and forth.
And I'm sure someone has thought of this, but I have to ask, is there a way for you to contact the designers of this website and tell them to turn it off?
Yes, we did, and that started one of the original issues of not showing everybody.
Okay.
So we've been going through, there's some things we can change. There's other things that the company has to change, and of course, it's a large company.
Sure.
It's hard to get stuff done quickly through them, especially on a holiday weekend.
Sure.
So we're managing that. We're, we've got notes. We will have multiple debriefings after this, trying to figure out how we can change it, how we're gonna make it better, how we're gonna make the public see a better picture than what we've had right now. And honestly, this is the first storm with the, with the system we've had of any size, and we see the deficiencies in it. We, we know they're there. We just haven't had a test for it, and now we have. Unfortunately, it was a bad test.
Right, right. Well, I appreciate you already asking them to, to tweak things for us, and anything we can do to sort of stay on them, because if we're not getting power back until Sunday, a clearer picture is just gonna be so important for folks.
And one thing we're doing, I know it's on our, it's on our website. Amber's been putting it out on Facebook and Twitter. We do have a list of where we're actually working and where we're planning on going, so it's, that information's out there.
And so.
Sometimes it's hard to get it narrowed down to an exact lateral off a circuit. I had a phone call yesterday, one of the aldermen, and they went from this block to this block. Just the way the circuits lay out, sometimes your house will be on, across the street will not, and then sometimes they jump.
Lots, yeah, that's a lot.
And so, that's, that's the unique thing about our system. Over the years, as the city's grown, and you start infilling different areas, sometimes the circuits are different, sometimes the laterals are different, sometimes a fuse is blown on one, and we can backfeed part of it, we can't backfeed the other half. So there's different things like that.
And so, would there be no way for us to turn our internal maps outward facing?
The amount of data in there that you see, I think it would, it would cause more havoc.
Okay.
It's just.
Like personal information?
Not personal information, just there's so much, in an outage this big.
It's also a security issue.
Okay.
Part of it's security.
So, security in terms of?
Security.
Information and infrastructure.
Okay, but like, we can go on there now and see who's in an outage and who isn't?
You, what you can see from the public facing, and this is another problem we run into a little bit. Doug was an example yesterday in a meeting with the mayor. You have to know the phone number we have on record and your house number. And if you put that in there, it'll give you an error if it doesn't come up, and, and we've seen that a lot. You know, somebody's been in our house for fifteen years, they had a landline, now they got a cellphone. They put their cellphone number in, but never changed the number with us. So then it doesn't show up there too. So there's some of those issues that we see. So, but when you, when you look at our personal one, there, there's a lot of data behind it.
Sure.
And it's being able to strip that down is part of the security issue. Then two, when you look at the volume of, of what shows up on our map, you have to drill down into it pretty deep to be able to see it.
Sure. I would say even like a screen grab or something that doesn't have a lot of data for Ward 6. Personally, I know, I'm sorry that I'm like harping on my own folks, but.
That's what you were elected to do.
Thank you. But, yeah, just to know a little bit, not a granular level, but I've had people asking me about certain streets or certain neighborhoods, and to be able to tell them nothing is hard.
And, and that's some of the things we're gonna look at on our public side, is public facing ones. What can we do data-wise to be able to make it a better picture for, you get down to the street level?
Sure, sure.
Uh, one, one of the other things too, which we've talked about, and, you know, in, in past couple of years actually, is going to AMI meters. AMI give you the detail, basically, we know who's on and off at every location that has a meter. So it's, it's, it's instant, there's no delay, and there's another, there's, there might be some predictive stuff in it, I guess, I would assume, but it's, it's, that would solve a lot of the problems, but that's more like a twelve million, maybe fifteen million plus. I can't remember the exact number we used for the budget meeting, but it's, it's a lot of money.
Not, not a switch we can flip on?
No, no, and every meter on every house and business would need to be replaced. Well, not every business, but many of them would have to get replaced, you know, so it's an inconvenience for the customer a little bit, as well as the cost.
Sure.
Alderwoman, this administration plans on getting that information to you.
Okay, thank you so much. And just one last thing. I've had calls about live wires, and I, I don't think I've come across a special number for folks to call if they have a live wire that is like endangering them or their tenants.
Normally, what's that? It's the same number. It's seventy-nine, twenty-one, twenty-one. The volume of calls, I understand, has been very large. Like I said, we've had over seventy thousand calls since last Thursday. If they're having that issue and they get with you, I would suggest send Doug or I text that there's a live wire. We will make sure it gets to them, and then usually we'll grab, as soon as they see that, they will get somebody out there to make sure it's de-energized.
Sure, okay. I, I appreciate that so much, but if there's any way at all you could find another number for folks to call for this?
The problem, the problem is when we get to a volume this big, there is, we don't have people just sit around and answer phones.
Sure, sure.
If we did, you wouldn't get a recording when you called twenty-one, twenty-one. That's the unfortunate problem. You could, they're gonna do, they're gonna get ahold of us the same way.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, everybody, let me know about those live wires. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes ma'am. Alderman Rockford.
Yeah, Matt, this is for you. Appreciate everything you're doing, all your crews. My question is, and it's come up a few times, and, so you, we got these, these pockets of people, four, five, six, ten houses, that everybody's got it, power around them, and whether it's a quick fix or it's gonna, it's a long-lasting, is it, is there a reason why we don't go back and finish up these smaller, you know, if we, we send people out there? Is it just manpower issues? Is it equipment parts?
That's where it all falls into that, that prioritization and getting that information back to our Ops Center. So you're gonna see people on foot. You may see someone come by in a truck, a van, a car, a bucket truck, something, but they may just be there to inventory that system, ultimately to put it in that roster, if you will, of things we need to do. And so then we're gonna look back and go, okay, in this area, we have ten problems. Five of them are huge and five of them are small, but while you're around there, we're trying to address those while we're there. But again, we don't wanna put all of our resources in the southeast.
Right.
And leave someone hanging at Cold Road and Route Fifty-four.
Well, just, it helps, it helps with, with the folks that we can explain to them, you know, so they get to understand a little bit more layman's terms instead of the electric, electrical side terms, you know. They didn't come out and assess it and, and take it back and, and send the information in, and, but these folks don't understand it, you know. You got power and I don't, and he does, and I, and they don't. So again, that those are the questions, and it's continuous, so. And so, you know, you tell them to call seven, eight, nine, twenty-one, twenty-one, and, and then, you know, they get more angry, and they say, I've already done it fifty times, and, you know, and it clogs you guys up, so.
To answer part of that too, I know there, we did have one the other day, and you look at it, the problem was the transformer blew. And so do I, do I take a crew off of two hundred people over here
Right.
to go put one transformer up to get five people on?
Right.
Because that whole amount of transformers is not an easy task to replace.
Sure.
So it's that balance that.
Oh yeah.
I know, I know.
Pick and choose.
People get frustrated with it, but it's a balance that we have to make that choice.
Well, in, in, in what I hear, Scott, and, and is it, is it, you know, I, I want my power on too, you know, so my power's as important as theirs, but, you know, I understand where you're coming from, and so, thank you.
As we get fur, a little bit further and we get closer, we'll have the crews be able to split up more, be able to take care of them quicker at that point.
Right, right.
Yeah, just in short, we're trying to take into consideration the size of the outage, the area of town, how many people are on it, the extent of the damage. Is it in a backyard or front yard? Do we need special equipment or normal equipment? And just evaluate that constantly over and over, and we're meeting three times a day and trying to go over those things.
Thank you guys.
Any more questions, Alderman?
No, thank you.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you Madam Mayor. Thank each of you and all of the employees. Just on my way here on Seventh Street, a tree fell right in front of us, close in Enos Park, and it's sitting on a line. So like you said Doug, even the aftermath and the wind from the loose branches are now pulling our lines down too. And I think it was so important what you just said about the boxes on our house. That's the most phone calls that I'm getting right now, is that people poles and their boxes have fell off their houses, and they also don't have the means to pay for them to get them back on. And I'm explaining to them, they asked about the calls, having a electrician come out, and we're getting like mixed messages. The tree companies are coming out and saying that CWLP can do it, the like, the electrical companies are saying CWLP can do it. So I think your email will be very helpful, and maybe Ms. Amber is very good at graphics to just explain that process for people on private properties.
Yeah, that, and that's been in some of the communication emails I've sent. I know you've had some power issues yourself, you know.
And I explained that Doug.
There's others too, right?
I explained that to them too, that I've been personally through it and showed them the process of it.
And, so the outage page that we have, there is information on there, kind of what is their repair, the homeowner's repair versus this utilities repair. So there's a great graphic on there, a picture, that explains that pretty well. So I would encourage anybody that has damage on their home to go to that, the webpage and, and look at that.
I will share that photo, and Madam Mayor, maybe this is something that you can bring up too, because there's constituents of mine that can't afford to get that box put back on. Like it cost me eight hundred dollars to do it to my home, and they're saying that they don't have the funds to do that.
Director Yazil has a conference call with HUD to see if we can get some federal assistance with that.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Is that it? Alderman Williams.
Yes. So thank you guys. I appreciate you. And thank you all.
So thank you guys, I appreciate you. And thank you all, the, you answered most of my questions that I don't have to ask. A ditto to everybody, cause a lot of that was what I, I experienced or either I wanted to ask. However, there are a few that, um, haven't been talked about. And, and the first one I wanna talk about on your, um, personnel, like whether it's in a truck or a car or whatever. Uh, some of my folks in my ward have been telling me, they would run up to the vehicle, you know, in desperation, hey, you here for us? And in the conversation, that person doesn't know they're out. They says, oh, you're out of power? And then the, you know, the constituent is saying, what? You CWLP, yeah, I'm out of power. So I, I kinda wanna be able to explain how that happens. So everybody that is sent out, they may be in the area, but not know for sure who has it and don't?
Well, I, 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 that, I, I guess, uh, you know, not every house would be out necessarily if they go to an area. So they, they're better on asking if the person's out, so that way they definitely a hundred percent know that you're out. Um, it's the, it's not they're trying to be disrespectful in any manner at all, they're just trying to make sure they dot the i's and cross the t's.
Okay.
On that. Have you any thing?
Yeah, and, and most of the time, like, like during this, we've got engineering staff and, and others that are going out and looking. And we tell them, go walk down this circuit. They just know they're walking down the circuit. We're looking for switches open, broken poles, whether it's a, a mirror on a house that's off. Just assess the entire circuit. They don't know if, cause they don't have the map with them, so they don't know if all the houses are out or two of the houses are out or ten of them. They're just assessing that circuit. So yeah, they, they wouldn't necessarily know that individual house is out.
Okay, you know, I, I mean, that was kind of a difficult one to explain because I'm like, yeah, they're CWLP. But however, some of them have come back online and some of them, as we sit, are still off, so, you know.
At the same time with ten thousand outage, ten thousand people out as of two days ago, you could call me and I, I wouldn't be able to tell you you're out.
Sure, sure.
I mean, and, and we are tapping everybody that we have on that, in that department. So we're sending out people that actually has not knowing their job. Um, to actually help too, just to, so we've got so much area to cover. Um, so that's probably a little bit of the hindrance maybe on, in, in some things like that, but.
Well, so that, that, that brings me into my second question. So, uh, when the storm hit, uh, did we cease, uh, normal routine duties? Uh, and everybody became committed and focused strictly on a farm, or did we have some activities that were normal still going on? And, and I'll, and I'll give you the example that, that I was given. So, uh, the crews that are crew, I don't know, cause I wasn't there, that was picking weeds, where my constituents thought, well, hey, they could be helping, you know, clear the driveway where these branches are. And, but they're on the medium picking weeds. So I said, I thought everybody was working storm issues, dealing with trees and lines down and things like that. So I'm just asking you, did they continue working?
That's a Public Works question.
Yeah, I don't think we've had anybody doing that.
So I'll wait till Public Works come up then. But, or I'll just ask it like this. So those kind of crews couldn't have been utilized to like clear driveways or do things, or they just continued on with their daily?
Well, for us, it would be as if there's, if there's, if there's trees that are down with power lines in them, then we have to have, you know, uh, qualified personnel to, to deal with that. Once the power lines are cleared out of the way, um, if it's on personal property, then, uh, yeah, then, uh, you know, the homeowner can take charge of it. If it's, I guess if it's in the street, Public Works takes charge of it, you know.
I, I think.
Yeah, it'd be like that.
Yeah, I think I kinda understand what's going on. So when a constituent sees city workers doing the weeds versus doing other stuff, all they see is city. They don't know the, the differences. I, I'm imagining that's probably what happens. So I thank you again, uh, for coming and updating us. Thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
Yes, sir. Alderman Carlson.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Um, I think you've answered most of the questions that my constituents had for me. The one question, and it, it's just clarification. It may be just sheer volume, but this whole CWLP priority list, if there's medical condition in the home, was it just? I mean, how's that supposed to work? I, I had really never heard of it before and is it, you know, how do you prioritize because of that, or is it, was it just?
When you're dealing with this, you know, probably every feeder circuit.
Right.
Has somebody on it, right? So our first priority is to get all the feeder circuits on it, because really without that, all the stuff below it, it, it just doesn't matter. So we have to get the feeders back on, the main feeders. And then as you step down to the next level, which is like what they call the, the laterals of the backbone, really of the, of the electric grid. Then we start looking at those kinds of things to take into consideration if we can. But again, you know, when we're dealing with an area of two hundred over here, five hundred over there, and a group of five over here, you know, there's still too many that are in that, kind of that category, you know, of, of that. Um, so, uh, but as we get further down, that is, it's gonna come more into play.
So it's just a volume thing, obviously. In a normal course of operation, if there was just a few hundred out, then that, then that, that's when this priority list would kick in.
Right, yes.
And you can get a much smaller micro level to get them, okay?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And we did like, I, I think Matt touched on, I mean, we try to get major medical facilities, um, you know, nursing homes, the ones with a large amount of people, uh, grocery stores, those kinds of things, um, you know, tho- that's what we're trying to get first and then start.
Any more questions, Alderman?
No, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I just want to, first and foremost, thank you, you gentlemen, and the men and women that are out on the streets that are trying to make this city, put the city back in the same condition it was in prior to the storm. It is appreciated more than you know. A lot of my questions have been asked this evening, but one question I, I, that came up as you were talking is, we have all these extra crews, all these extra trucks. And will they stay in Springfield until we're down to zero or near zero, so to speak?
Yeah, so as we come along and as things start to wind down, we'll release, release them one at a time. So they may not all leave at the same exact time. But they are all staying in Springfield.
Great.
Until they're done.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And that is appreciated because, you know, these, and, and Alderman Rockford touched upon it, these pockets that are out there and, and you can, even, and the map is good for this. You can see where you have eighty-four out in one area and you can understand why that, that would be a priority over two. But I'd hate to be, you know, one of those two people and, you know, to live in those houses and it's, you know, obviously just as important. So I know you're taking it seriously and I'm very satisfied with the answer. So thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Gregory.
Oh, it's my turn. Uh, thank you. Um, I just wanted to ask, um, on, on, on some of the trees, when we, when we do, um, establish connection to, to the house, the tree may still be down and, and, and I think maybe we, we have a wire that maybe we just disconnected or whatever, still down. How, how should we go about cutting that up? Cause we got volunteers and stuff that wanna help people out and stuff. Um, for instance, there was a lady, she, she has, uh, crossing her, her driveway, she does wanna, she's moving or something like that. Um, and her power has been restored, so I would imagine that line's not active, but, uh, um, we, we have a lot of those situations.
Are you seeing the, wait a minute, so are you seeing the power's restored, but the line might be still touching or, uh, or an old line?
An old line and, and, and people are just sort of, you know, wearing, like, they see the line, but, you know, that guy power, I would assume is dead at that point, but.
Yeah.
See what I'm saying?
We can't assume anything when it comes to electricity.
I know.
So if there's wires in the trees, you honestly just have to wait. You have to stay away from them and you have to treat them as, as energized.
Okay. All right. Um, and, and, and my final question is, is, I, I know we have some high rises with some elevators in them. Um, normally do, do these elevators have, have a generator if all three of them back, you know, go down and? We don't, okay, okay, all right, all right, all right. Um, and my final question is, is just for my own personal sake, um, is there a way that I can get, uh, just maybe some of the, most of the addresses of the outages, like in, in my ward? And, and I'm asking that not for a, a, a speed up process of, of what, what you guys are doing. Um, but, but more so, so we can get to people, make sure they're okay, um, the situations that I run into, even while we can try to feed people and keep comments, really knowing where everyone's at and getting to everyone.
Mayor, I, I don't know, have you, I mean, I know the other day you, you shared it.
Yeah, we supplied, but it's, it's, I think what he's looking for is specific address. It's not a generalized area, right, Alderman?
Um, yeah, we'll see if there's a way to export it.
If I got a bunch in, in, in some pockets or stuff, can we get those addresses, so I can just get, um, some people there to check on them?
By word easy enough or not?
All right, if it's too much, don't worry about it, we'll, but I, 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 I would like something like that.
Oh, no, I, I would distribute it for everybody.
Just do the whole city, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, we, we can look at doing that. Uh, I know we put together some maps, I don't remember Friday, Saturday, Sunday, I don't remember what day it was, now they all run together. We put together some maps. They weren't necessarily by ward, cause our, our system isn't broke down by ward. But we put some maps together in some areas of pockets like that and, and we could look at something and we could get it to everybody in your ward still.
All right, I appreciate you. And finally, I, I, I do thank everyone and, and I think we, you know, we gotta hold off on too much. Thanks to the work's done, so everybody got power and, and, um, cause the frustration's gonna close in, the more, longer and longer it's out, right? Um, but, but I, I, I do wanna say thank you to Amber. Um, Doug's assistant or, or second in command, she, she does a wonderful job adjusting. I, I know I sent out a lot, a lot of emails. She never, never, uh, got anger or anything. She, she, she just adjusted and made a spreadsheet and, and just making sure that we had that information. So that, that's the, the type of thing that we look for, the community looks for, so we appreciate y'all and just keep working. And, you know, there, there's one of our guys out there, he's big as, big boy, Armstrong, you know, and, and they are working hard and we see him. So, uh, we appreciate y'all and we just gotta finish out, so I appreciate y'all.
Just real quick too, and, 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 you know, for emails, you know, when you send them to me, it's not that I don't, I'm looking at all of them. I, I can always respond, um, but I am forwarding them. Um, and we're trying to set up, uh, you know, as, as, as the wind down of the, uh, you know, when they're out there assessing things, um, I mean, we're gonna try to assign people to help us and, you know, more in the, in staying inside, doing office stuff and, and trying to help us better assess those things and, and look reviewing duplicate type information coming in, making sure it's in the system, making sure, uh, you know, there's not additional information being provided, you know, those kinds of things, so.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Conley.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and thank you, gentlemen. Um, learned a lot more tonight. I'm very excited, Doug, as soon as we can get that information to send out to people about contractors having capacity to do those connections, cause that has absolutely been a concern. I, I, you've kind of touched on, on the one, I mean, everyone has brought up, we, we're, we're all dealing with the same sort of issues, so the same, the, my questions, um, but those duplicates, cause I've had so many people reach out to me and say, you know, I called four or five times, I'd left messages, I'm just not sure. Um, you know, my response, I, I did, you know, obviously, I think I reached out to you once or twice, um, an hour, a minute, it felt like. Like, and, and, and also kudos to Amber. Um, she's, she's been fabulous, cause I was trying not to bother you directly as much. Uh, but is there, um, how are you assessing these duplicates? And, and is there a way for people, and, and I'm not even gonna talk about that outage map, because Scott, I love you, defend the thing if you want to. I, I, it, it has given me more gray hairs than, I mean, I didn't need anymore, but.
I don't have enough to turn gray.
I mean, if you did, it would be awful right now, right? That, 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 that map was, was painful. But people who've called a number of times, who've left messages, who are still in these pockets and they're still without power, or they're in the situation where their meter box, and I'm telling everyone, I've been listening to all of your education, um, get that fixed, get your own electrician in. But until right now, you know, tonight, it was, and then let CWLP know, so you can be connected safely. Is there some way that we can do? Just tell me you've got some good, close review of these duplicate calls, so that we do know for sure, there's a ticket, people are, are gonna be, are going to be reached. I'm not asking for any, any, you know, I know, we've heard about Ameren texting people. Um, I do point out, that's, that's a larger company than we are. But was, how exa- I mean, just, just tell me you've got tickets for these, that's all I wanna hear. That's what I've been telling everyone. The logistics, cause I know these multiple phone calls have gotta be difficult for you. My concern is that someone who's called three or four times doesn't have their tickets just kinda, oh yeah, we've already got that, and now we've lost them.
So as our crews go through an area, they understand to go down every street and every alley and visit every house. And if there's a house that they can't reconnect because of the damage or something, or there's something that they need to get fixed, they'll leave them a hazard card. And we keep track of all those by serial number.
Okay, so you've been leaving hazard cards?
Yeah, so.
I haven't heard from anyone who's gotten those yet, so.
So yeah.
I'm sure they're planning.
If our crews go there, they'll get a hazard card and then that comes back to our ops center and then we'll have this nice little stack of hazard cards that we'll have to reassess later. And that, that's one thing that we're always careful of, right? When we say we've been in your area, and then we say, okay, well now we're leaving that area and there's still a couple of people out of power. The only reason they should still be out of power, once we remove that and we decide that we're leaving there, is because we can't do it.
And, and I think, I've, I've, I mean, again, Amber has been fabulous with sharing information, um, lots, I think you, CWLP has gotten that message out a couple of different ways, maybe not one that succinctly. So I appreciate that. Um, and then just one more thing, as we're looking to recover, um, because we will be, um, longer term looking at recovery and resiliency. Storms like this are probably not going to go reduce in number. We know full well that, that we are seeing these, these smaller, more destructive storms. Um, I've had a lot of people ask me about underground, and Doug, we've talked about it, I know. But looking at grant funds, other funding opportunities, ways that we can start extending our reach with burying lines, especially in older neighborhoods where we've got, or we had until Thursday, massive trees, you know, lots of tree branches. Um, I have some newer areas that don't have as much old growth, but, or, or money trees at all, but there are a lot of areas with these, you know, with trees that are left. They're big, they're still there. That request has been made multiple times. I know we're not at that point yet, but I'm gonna get it out in your ears now just as a, put it on the next steps, cause people, and I, I had, my, my lines are under, underground and I was without power for a couple of days. So I, I get that's not the end all be all solution. But it is something that people are asking for, that we continue to keep in our minds as part of, um, forward thinking planning.
One thing to keep in mind, when you look at our primary backbone, if we put it underground and you have an underground cable fail, that outage is much longer.
Yes, I know.
And that is one of the downfalls of putting so much underground. I understand.
I mean, we, we can pro and con that list all along, but people, you know, people are looking at the tree, and, and I get it, I do. And I've, I've, I've mentioned that to people too. I said, this, there are, you know, there's, this is, none of this is a one size fits all solution. But the request has been made to me multiple, multiple times. I promised I would convey it and I know I've brought this up before and, and I think I've heard that information before, so, um, I, I just wanna let you know. I mean, and, and again, I, everyone I, I talk to and I, we, we've said it, thank you to these crews, um, to your crews, when, when Dave comes up, Public Works, um, CDO's, a huge debt of gratitude to the men and women who have been working seventeen hour days. I mean, that's, that's a lot of time. That's a lot of hours and, and a job that can be very dangerous if anything goes wrong. So, um, please, sure, thank you. And to the crews who've traveled and are now working these long days. They're not even our people. We're, we're grateful very much.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. Um, just to make sure everybody's clear that, uh, on the thousand, y- you said we're, our goal's to get, you, you know, to where we only have about a thousand out, is that the people that, that have to do their, get their own electrician? Or is that, are you guys figuring that, is that figured in the, in the count? Because if we, if we have, I mean, if we've done all our work and you got, you know, there could be a thousand people that don't, that have the, I don't know, what, what, what'd you call it, uh, the thing on the house that?
Weatherhead.
Yeah, the weatherhead that, I mean, does that include that? I, I just was wanting to.
Yeah, if, if the weatherhead's down or their meter's off their house and whether we've gotta reconnect or if, if the contractor hasn't reconnected it, then yeah.
You're gonna count that into the thousand, okay. But it's not necessarily all of the CWLP's responsibility that they're out, that's, it's because of the damage from a tree that hit their line going to their house?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, cool. And then the, I, I do wanna thank everybody at, at CWLP and, and Public Works. But I guess the, the next question, and this is for, um, for you guys and, and Dave. What more can we do up here for you guys and for your depart- you know, as far as during this, during this, um, emergency? What, what can we do to help you guys and to help you guys, you know, moving forward? Now, don't be giving me a list of, of a hundred million dollars worth of equipment that we need, but I, I, I mean, I'm talking about in the,
Be costly, but.
In the next short period of, you know, that what can we do to, to help you?
You know, I, I'd say that, you know, the messaging, um, about, you know, how, again, how much damage there is. I just, I think, you know, if you just take a drive through some of the, the areas that have mature trees and you see the piles of branches that are lining the streets, um, you can see the sheer, the sheer magnitude just of that. And think of that, how that's affected all the power lines everywhere. Um, and I know, again, I know people are frustrated, I would be too. It, it's. It, it's, it's, uh, but it's not because the, you know, the infrastructure is bad. It's not because the employees are not doing their job. You know, it's, you know, just back that up and, and get that message out there so they understand it. But also let them know that we've got all these extra resources here trying to get that job done. And then these other tidbits of information too, I mean, we can put press releases, we can put it on social media. Um, it doesn't always get to everybody though. Um, so every person that it hits, even from you, that helps too. Like the, especially on this, the email that I'll send out, um, about, uh, them using a contractor that, that actually gets, uh, a meter key, um, that, that's going to help a lot. That's what I think. What, do you have anything to add or?
Just Matt kind of touched on it a little bit earlier. It's just if we're out in the, out in the field and I know people are frustrated, let our crews get their work done. Don't harass them, you know, come up, say hi, thank you. That's fine. Let them get their work done. That's one of the biggest things.
I just wanted to add something about, you know, thinking about this last group of people or we're getting down to the end and that. Don't misunderstand CWLP and all these contractors, everyone that's here is going to do everything we can to get the lights on, even if it's temporary. We will hold it up with a piece of rope. We'll do something. We'll still give you that hazard ticket. But we're going to try very, very hard to get the lights on. We're not going to say, well, we just can't do this.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, and we're also going to really dig down deep and find those customers that aren't on. We're not expecting those customers to have to call five and six and seven times. We're going to make sure that everybody's on before we stop.
Alderwoman Natriano.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, one more question. A constituent brought to my attention that not everyone is online and, um, not everyone is able to check the website. Um, and then there are folks, another constituent brought up, uh, accessibility issues, not being able to, you know, if you're visually impaired or something like that, not being able to interpret the info that's being put out, um, either by the city or by the utility. Um, just how, uh, how are we communicating with people who aren't online, I guess? Um, because I am super online, so I don't even know. But, um, in terms of press conferences, um, radio, I, I, I really wouldn't even know. It's been so long since I've not had my phone attached to me, so.
Um, well, the, the mayor's, uh, having a press conference every day, uh, now. Um, and, uh.
First one was Thursday, the night of the event.
That's right, yeah, that's right.
It started then.
And then, um, you know, if, if, as time allows, I try to do radio. Um, I did NPR this morning. And I did, uh, I can't remember which one I did Monday. Um, but yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, but it's not easy. Uh, you know, if I start doing that, I got to give up doing the other things that I got to do. Plus, you know, unfortunately, we still have other issues with utility that we have to run as well. Um, so, you know, we're doing the best we can. And, you know, the communications like that, uh, you know, the media's been getting stuff out there that we put out as well.
Yeah, okay. Unfortunately, we can't go to everyone's door because there's so many of them. So it is through social media, the website and/or our media that's present here that we've invited to everything we've had, so.
Yep, gotcha, yeah.
Haley wants to speak. This is Haley Wilson, your communications director.
I just wanted to let you know that we did get your message and we did hear from the community. We did have a sign language interpreter today for the press conference.
Thank you.
We'll make sure it's that way going forward. Social media, we make sure that we add all of the text that's in the post, I'm sorry, in the images to the post. So that way, if there's any accessibility issues, we can get it that way. And closed captioning on, um, all of our press conferences as well. And then also we're doing social media, we're doing radio and we're doing news. So we're trying to get out as much as possible to everybody.
Yeah, and I would say if, if you know of a time when people, people should listen, let me know and I'll try to share that.
Yeah, um, and the audio from today's.
Right, on social media, oh.
Audio from today's press conference will be available to all radio stations once it's processed. So then we'll be sending that also. And I'll let the radio stations know to let us know when they plan on featuring that as well.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Alderman Redpath.
So Doug, we talked today about, uh, the distribution of, uh, resources because of the magnitude, the people we just brought in. Could you reiterate the, the numbers that were, we just brought in and, you know, the, uh, the pocket thing is, is everybody's problem. Everybody's got pockets where they got very little access, but, you know, I know we're trying to get the big numbers on as fast as we can, but we still got a lot of people out there that, that are hurting and need help. And, uh, so if you could just reiterate those numbers.
Yeah, those, uh, um, just to make sure it only was, um, so the, the count that doesn't include the contractors that showed up this, like today, or this afternoon, wasn't it? And then the ones that are coming tomorrow, we have a hundred and thirty-three additional employees, uh, or personnel, a hundred and twelve trucks. So we have over two hundred people in the field.
That's since the start.
With our people and them. Um, so, and then I believe, uh, maybe is it Ameren? Ameren tomorrow? Ameren's bringing in, how many crews? Fourteen, they're bringing in fourteen additional people tomorrow with their trucks. Um, they, I mean, of course, they had to do their local area first and then, then they can come over.
And today, what'd you get on today?
Yeah, how many people?
How many people, how many customers?
How many did you put back up?
People did we bring in today?
No, how many did you get back up?
Oh, uh, let's see here. It's, well, let's just, let's see here. I think yesterday was about seven thousand. And now we are, uh, under forty-eight hundred. Um, one second, let me just look again. Sometimes passed. It, it, because it's, we, we gained some and then we lose some, you know? I mean, there's another outage, so, uh, looks like. So it's, it's back up to fifty-eight hundred right now that are out. So, I mean, just within an hour, it's went from, it's gained about, uh, you know, uh, nine hundred people. So there, there must've been something that happened. Could've been like the tree that, that fell. Um, those kinds of issues that are happening out there right now, real time. But, you know, they were, it was good to see under five thousand there for a while, at least.
Well, thank you. We know, we know you guys are working as hard as you can. I, I talk to your crews all the, all the time, all day. They, they get tired of hearing from me like you get tired of hearing from me. But, uh, you're doing a good job and, uh, we appreciate all you guys do.
Thank you.
Thank you to the three of you. And I can say as Mayor, I've been out meeting with the IBEW crews that are out and all of our electricians and our people that are in helping our electricians. And I've been out with Public Works multiple times and I've let them all know, not just this administration, but the city council thanks them for all their work. I've been telling them that. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
The Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the June twentieth, twenty twenty-three city council meeting and approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. The Chair will now entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances into the record of this council meeting. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Say nay. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda into the record of this council.
They'll move, Mayor.
Second. We have a first and a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. The Chair is now going to entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
They'll move.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion on that? Okay, we'll now vote on that. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion carries ten voting yes, none voting no. Agenda numbers twenty, two thousand twenty-two dash three eight four, two thousand twenty-three dash zero eight six, two thousand twenty-three dash one seven three, two thousand twenty-three dash two zero one, two thousand twenty-three dash two zero two, and two thousand twenty-three dash two zero three remain tabled or in committee. Any action on any of these items? The next item on the agenda is two thousand twenty-three dash two eight one, an ordinance approving a payment to Troxel and Company in an amount not to exceed four million, six hundred thousand dollars for a property insurance policy for thirty-nine City of Springfield properties for a one-year term for the Office of Public Utilities. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand twenty-three dash two eight one on final passage. Still moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion on this ordinance? No one has signed up to speak. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion carries ten voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is two thousand twenty-three dash two eight eight, an ordinance approving the appointment of Kristen D. DeCinsco to the Springfield Local Liquor Control Commission. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand twenty-three dash two eight eight on final passage.
They'll move.
Second. We have a first and a second. Any discussion on this ordinance?
Yes, Mayor.
Alderman Williams.
I, I just want to, uh, share with the council that, you know, I have read the ordinance and, and, and talked with folks about the ordinance of the difference that I brought up between the two farmer, all the women. And I'll just say that, um, that same ordinance or uh, code says that this council does have the authority to, to override it or do their will, you know, as you will. I just want to remind, remind you, Mayor, and my council members that, um, whatever votes you take, it just, we, the people are looking at this and they're seeing one, uh, farmer, all the woman being very, treated very different than another all the woman. Uh, so I won't be supporting it, but I just wanted to say that. And, and yes, we are, if there's six votes, it passes. But I just wanted to be on record saying that I, I've done my due diligence. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Alderman Donaldin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I, I want to thank, I, I think it was Alderman Rockford that brought up the issue last week about that whole three-year language and, and it was, uh, worth looking into. I always appreciate that. But it caused me to go back and look, uh, the Alderman, the Alderperson you're referring to, Alderwoman you're referring to was, uh, Alderwoman Gail Simpson. And, and, uh, you know, I, I, it's kind of funny how a question like that helps you reflect back and see, see what happened. I did vote for Alderman Simpson as I plan on voting for Alderwoman DeCinsco, uh, here today. And, and I think we have, it's clear in the code that, uh, the intent is to make it so the council's involved in those decisions and they just can't happen on their own. So anyway, I encourage a buy vote.
Any other discussion on this ordinance? Okay, the voting is now open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. The voting. I feel like we're missing one. Alderwoman Purchase.
Oh, I'm sorry. I hate you.
And the motion carries with six voting yes, four voting present. The next item on the agenda is item number two thousand twenty-three dash two nine zero, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the redevelopment agreement with Dog Eared LLC, ordinance number two six five dash zero six dash two one, amending the time limitations with project to be completed no later than December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and requested funds in the amount of seventy-five percent of the costs, not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars for facade rehabilitation and easement at four thirteen dash four fifteen East Adams Street for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand twenty-three dash two nine zero on final passage. Still moved.
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion on this ordinance? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no.
I'm a yes. I don't know what's going on.
Sticky today, huh?
Yeah.
All right, the motion passes with nine, but nine voting yes, none voting no, and one is not in the chamber right now. The next item on the agenda is item number two, two thousand twenty-three dash two nine one, an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the redevelopment agreement with Vegas Line Properties LLC, ordinance number two six three dash zero six dash two one, amending the time limitation with project to be completed no later than December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, and requested funds in the amount of seventy-five percent of the costs, not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars for facade rehabilitation assistance at two fifteen South Fifth Street for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand twenty-three dash two nine one on final passage. Still moved. Second. We have a first and a second. Any discussion on this ordinance? Okay, the voting is now open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion carries with ten voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number two zero twenty, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-three dash two nine two, an ordinance authorizing the amendment to the redevelopment agreement with six twenty-nine East LLC, ordinance number two six four dash zero six dash two one, amending the scope of work to include roof replacement, time limitations with project to be completed no later than June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, and requested funds in the amount of seventy-five percent of the costs, not to exceed three hundred sixty-two thousand dollars for facade rehabilitation, architectural assistance, easement and roof replacement at six twenty-nine and six thirty-one East Adams Street and one twenty-three South Seventh Street for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. The Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number two thousand twenty-three dash two nine two on final passage. Still moved. Second. We have a first and a second. Any discussion on this ordinance? Okay, the voting is now open. All those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion carries with ten voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number two thousand twenty-three dash two nine seven, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a bucket trouble truck from Drake Scruggs Equipment Incorporated in an amount not to exceed one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for the Office of Public Utilities for emergency passage.
They'll move.
Second. All right, we have a first and a second to place agenda number two thousand twenty-three dash two ninety-seven on emergency passage. Any discussion on this ordinance? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, opposed, please vote no. And the motion passes with ten voting, I'm sorry, eleven voting yes, none voting no. The next item on the agenda is item number two thousand twenty-three dash three two three, a resolution continuation, continuing the declaration of local state of emergency through July twelfth, two thousand twenty-three for emergency passage.
They'll move.
Second. We have a first and a second. Any discussion on this ordinance? Okay, the voting is now open. All those in favor of the motion, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. And the motion carries with eleven voting yes, none voting no. That'll conclude what we're voting on today. Is there any unfinished business to bring before the city council today? Alderman Hanauer.
Uh, yeah, um, before, um, Doug left, he asked me to let, let us know that, uh, the number has gone up a little bit. Uh, we had a blink. We had to take some people down, apparently around the lake. Um, so right now it's, it's at forty-seven hundred. Uh, but that's expected to go down because they had to take them down to fix it, to get more people down. So just wanted to let everybody, you wanted to make sure everybody was aware.
It was the same explanation he gave us before about having to take people down and then put them back up to get them going, so.
So you just wanted, he wanted to make sure everybody was aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Gregory.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, Ms. Val, just to follow up, uh.
She stepped out.
Okay, she'll hear me. But, um, um, I, I also want, I also, um, would like her, um, we had a conversation about, you know, this, this, uh, meter thing. So I, I, I'm glad that Alderwoman Person spoke on that as well. But, uh, uh, also tree funding and, and rental assistance, I know we'll be speaking with HUD and, and if any way we can, uh, make some of those things. And I say that because, you know, um, people have been displaced and those who have been, um, lucky enough to get a hotel room or other arrangements, you know, unfortunately, I'm on limited funds. Um, it's not much wiggle room and, but rent has, has to be paid. And, um, I've been contacted by several people who do rent and, um, they're still expected to pay. And, you know, uh, we'll have a struggle at that point. So I, I just want us to look at all options for that, um, as well as, um, for down trees. Because everyone won't have the ability to get some of these bigger trees cut up, um, that are laying across the front yards, backyards, et cetera. Um, and any assistance that we could give would, would, would help us speed up the process of, um, restoring our community back to where it was. Thank you.
So those that are displaced Aldermen can go to the BOS Center and the American Red Cross is set up there for twenty-four seven. And it is, if any of you in the council chambers want to go view that, it is amazing what they have set up over there. It is really, really amazing. Um, so they can stay for free there and get food and drink. And then also, um, for those who are homeowners that need help with debris removal, not renters, just homeowners, they can contact the Illinois Baptist Disaster Relief Team. They are here. The phone number is two one seven three four one two four one six.
Can you say that one more time?
You slowed down. I talk fast, Alderman, sorry. Two one seven three four one two four one six. And they are in the community now and they will assess and they are here just to help homeowners with the debris removal because there are homeowners who cannot get to that, as you are stating, Alderman Gregory.
All right, no, thank you. Thank you so much. And my, my, my follow, um, um, just request, um, for Mr. Fuse, the rec Fuse, um, but you ain't got to get up or nothing. I, I just would really like, um, some type of schedule. I, I, I know, um, similar to, you know, I don't know if we're going to follow, um, pickup as our normal tree branch pickup or if we're going to do some. tree branch pickup, or if we're going to do some extra ones, or how we're going to get around to each, to area. I get it, you know, as we restore, you know, the community I represent has already had some obstacles to overcome, so this has made it, you know, three times as worse. So, you know, I can't say I took my hat to many of our community, they have cut up those branches, and they have got a lot of them to the curb, which is, you know, you know, the last couple of years I've been working outside, I've been cutting grass, cutting trees and stuff. And that's no small feat to cut these trees up. There's no small feat to move them and cut them up even with a good chainsaw. So I know the guys working hard and around, I just want to try to give everybody more information on when they will see some crews in their area picking up these branches and stuff like that as we recover. I appreciate you.
If I may, Alderman. At six-thirty this morning, the Department of Public Works deployed ten debris collection crews. That includes one crew from the Illinois Department of Transportation, and we are greatly appreciative of their efforts. We deployed at the same time, six-thirty this morning, three cutting crews. These are all from the Forest Three Division, and these crews work exclusively right now with bucket trucks, chainsaws, cutting tree limbs that are hanging, cutting up trees that are down but are on, they're not really in the right of ways. We've pretty much cleared everything out of the streets, but the sidewalks and whatnot. So they've been concentrating on that. A good way that we keep track of our progress is the number of loads of debris that we have hauled. As of about three o'clock this afternoon, we had hauled one hundred and fifty-seven truckloads of debris. Our total since last Friday is five hundred and ninety truckloads of debris. Our folks are working hard, we're cutting it up as fast as we can in trying to get it out there and get it cleared. We have activated the branch collection map. If you take a look at Public Works on the city website, we're basically using our snow control grid system. If you take a look at it, you'll see which grids have crews that are active in it today. There were ten that were active today. Those are in the blue, those in the yellow do not have crews that are active in those areas. So that's the way you can keep track. I can't tell you what time they're going to be cutting a tree.
No, no, no.
On any, there's just no way I can do it. But I can't tell you what part of the city they're going to be working in today. So I would encourage everyone to check, the branch, the branch map was activated, and that's the best way that we can let folks know what areas our crews are in.
Okay. And my follow-up, my final question, I'm sorry.
For the sixth time.
Yeah, man. Yep, man. Just, this is real quick, though. So I did share that we were hiring a TDL hiring on our crew, and I know we have put some of those in in not only this budget that recently passed with last budget. So, you know, I would encourage our Office of Budget and Management, you know, to really look at that, and, you know, I don't expect this to help for immediately, but down the line as we continue on, I think it's a good time to get some guys in. When I put that out there, it's probably at like seventy-five percent. So a lot of people are interested in joining our crews and getting in on some of the good work. So if there is any more opportunities that we can hire, certainly, Mayor, if we can get those out there. I think we should have four spots out if we haven't filled them.
Alderman, I can tell you, we're having a really hard time getting the vehicles for them to drive.
Oh, yeah, you told me that, didn't you? All right. We put some money for that, so I hope it comes out quick. All right, thank you.
There's a shortage of vehicles out there. Director, do you have anything else?
No, unless there are any other questions.
I got a question.
Well, I'll go in order if you'll chime in, and then we'll let him, you just don't go far. Alderman Williams.
Yeah, and mine is for maybe you, I don't know. So I've heard a lot of discussion, and I'm happy pretty much about the tree removal. You know, I had twelve trees on roofs, just like laying on the roofs, and they did Facebook posts, and a bunch of guys have come over and got rid of some of them. So I'm down to four houses with trees on roof, and I'm glad you gave me this information. But then the key is homeownership. These are renters, you know, these are poor people who are renters who can never be able to remove those trees. So I'm looking for resources so that I don't just scapegoat and like send them to Ethan. You know, it's like Community Relations, you need to go, you know, talk to them and let him find places. So if anybody knows of anybody, I don't know if it's a tree service or whatever, these are, a couple of them are elderly people, and, but they rent, and my problem is, again, what we always fuss about is the out-of-state landlord. So if they got the power restored, which was the good part, all these homes with these trees do have power, so it isn't interrupting the power. But I know that those last four homes, those trees just can't stay laying on the roof forever, because it's probably a code violation of all. But, so if we know any tree service or somebody that knows how to get them last four trees off the roof, Director, I appreciate it. I know it's not your responsibility, it's not even the city's responsibility because it's private property. I was hoping this number you gave me, but then I just, in my ear, I'm hearing you saying own ownership, you know, the owners of the homes.
I think that company is afraid to go onto property if the owner hasn't authorized it. You know what I mean?
Well, I'll just have them still have a discussion and maybe, who knows? Thank you, guys, appreciate you.
Alderwoman Otriano.
Yeah, I'm guessing this is unfinished business, and this is not for you, Director. So yay, I guess. So I, someone just brought up getting people paid back for the something, I don't know. And it jogged my memory of a question that I wanted to bring up, an issue that some folks had talked to me about, was are we going to be able to do anything or work with any outside agencies to compensate folks for food lost in their freezer because of that, or fridges because of the outage? So I don't know, not everybody knows my life story or whatever, but I'm originally from New Orleans, and I am a Katrina survivor. And one of the things that they did, I think it was through like the Link, like EBT, to give money on that. And then I believe the Red Cross gave like two hundred and fifty-dollar cards or something. So I don't know if you've thought about that or anything, but I know that would be helpful.
The folks that do have Link cards, I guess Ethan wants to talk about this, so I'm going to, is that why you're coming up? All right, well, I won't steal his thunder, we're going to let Mr. Posey talk about this.
Don't go far, Dave.
Go ahead, Mr. Posey.
First things first, Alderman Williams, I do appreciate you sending people to me, you know, we're always there to answer phone calls, and sometimes people just need to hear someone and talk to them on the other end of the phone, and the Office of Community Relations will always be here to do that. Now, for people that have EBT, a SNAP card, a Link card, you can call the Red Cross, they'll have you call the insurance agency, and they will replace that for you free of charge. Now, for our people who do not fall under those circumstances of having EBT card, SNAP, or a Link, if it tells you anything, in front of me here, I have a plan, it's ninety-six pages, I'm reading through it all tonight, for a long-term and short-term relief plan. We'll be working on putting together a long-term relief group to not only find ways where you may be able to get SBA loans to help small businesses, individuals who are both renters and homeowners, but also to start putting in place a structure where we're training people in the community to be able to react and respond in disaster relief efforts, so we can help supplement what the Red Cross is already doing, help supplement what Public Works and CWLP are already doing from any standpoint outside of what you need to be certified for to deal with, you know, downed power lines and trees. So I don't have a exact short-term solution right now for replacing food that was lost. I've been talking to a lot of people, I spoke to an elderly member of the community today who is in a walker, she has a fridge full of food that has expired, she just got her power back on. What I suggested to her was, I provided her with a non-emergency line for the fire department to call and ask if perhaps some firefighters could come out and help her remove the...
Not necessary. Call the Office of the Mayor. I have to look up that number.
We've got another number for that now.
We've got an answer for this, Ethan Posey, two one seven seven eight nine twenty-two hundred, call the Office of the Mayor.
Yes.
The American Business Club has agreed to go help people who cannot get that food out.
Thank you to them.
Big shout-out to American Business Club here tonight. Budget Director Metzger, do you have anything from the IEMA standpoint for folks who lose food that you want to talk about?
Ethan covered most of it, it was those small, the SBA, and there is a recovery team, and that long-term recovery team, Red Cross, churches, and Salvation Army.
She's been meeting with IEMA on the money part, so.
Okay, just to reiterate, that I know this is a disaster on a different scale than Katrina, but that we gave, or we were able to find money for, or the government was able to find money for everyone, not just folks who were on Link, because as many of you all know, families today on average are unable to handle an emergency of five hundred dollars. So we really have to be thinking about everyone right now being in a tough spot and not being able to make ends meet.
Alderman Rockford.
Yeah, Dave. Appreciate all you're doing, your crews. I've spoke with Mike Disco about some things, you know, when it comes to, you know, the parking, no parking, you know, police order type stuff. And so there are areas, and I'm going to use the north end, because that's what I've been looking at the most, you know, where people can get in, and I know you're, the least amount hit, maybe in the west end of town, I know everywhere's been hit, but I don't assume that, where the, where the least, least amount of damage is done, where wires and, you know, I mean, you've got to pick and choose, and I get it, but there's areas that crews can get in there. And what I'm leading up to is, have we reached out to CWLP? You know, they've got grapple trucks, they've got dump trucks, they've got, you know, put things aside, I know he's got branches down in, talking about Ward One, they got problems out there, but we're still dealing with electrical lines through things and, I just, I want to try and understand how we're attacking this. I've done it before, I've, you know, been there, I'm trying to help out, but it's all, we're in a state of emergency, it's all hands on deck, so, you know, Water Department, if it's not an emergency, why don't we have them over with the trucks and the loaders and take advantage of everything that we can to get done?
All hands on deck is certainly the way that we see it. In fact, some of our sewer department crews and personnel have joined, the traffic, the streets guys who are primarily handling all of this.
I can answer that. Alderman, the grapple trucks for CWLP are with their crews, and then the county is looking for additional ones for us to put with their crews.
But we do have Bobcats, and we do have end loaders, and we do have operators, and we have trucks that we can, you know, because it's one person on a grapple truck with the driver, and they work together, you know, and then if they're not using a dump truck, let's take, the equipment's no good if it's sitting.
We're using, we're using all the, all the equipment, we've even had to contract to rent a couple of end loaders. We're running the equipment hard, we've got a number of trucks that are down, that happens every single day. Fleet Maintenance is able to bring some of them back. We had a tailgate fall off one the other day, and they had to weld and weld. We're using the equipment that's available to us. If it's a maintenance issue, if we've got, like the grapple, I read about three o'clock this afternoon, it was leaking. Well, some of my operators say they keep their own wrenches with them so that they can make some quick repairs on-site, so we don't have to tow the equipment back to Fleet Maintenance. Our guys are doing the very best they can with what they've got. A lot of our equipment is beat up. We're using it fast, and they're doing the very best they can with what they've got. So everything that we've got that's running is being used.
But also, also, when it's a state of emergency, all I'm saying is, is reach out to the lake services and the water departments and everybody we can get on board, you know, there's going to be times when you're not going to be able to make it out to the neighborhoods out by the lake, and you've got lake services out there that we've done in the past where we have picked up in public works areas, so to speak, but that's just, you know, it's like a shared service type thing, and, you know, not every, if they're available, if the Water Department can give up trucks and manpower and operators, you know, I just say take advantage of it.
I understand that. There are still water issues that they have to attend to. Lake Services, I haven't been out to the lake lately, but I hear they've got a lot of trees down as well, so I'm sure they're every bit as busy as Public Works.
CWLP has deployed their own workers to help them, and they have so many, so many pieces of equipment out, they don't have enough, so we've reached out to the surrounding communities asking to borrow equipment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Redpack.
Well, Alderman Rockford kind of hit a lot of my issues about the lake. The biggest problem we're having at the lake is we have, we still have wires in the trees, and we can't do anything with the trees with the wires in them. And there's on East Lake Drive, and I think one of my constituents is sitting here who has been, I'm not kidding, it's the biggest tree I've ever seen, it's full, our team went down there the other day to see if we could start cutting it up, and we could not because there's still wires in it. That's the biggest problem that we're seeing. And we got people that, actually, the neighbors are all gathering together trying to help each other, but we can't get in those trees with the wires in them. Ast, is it Astleman or whatever?
Yes, yes.
Those guys came by, but they never came, they stopped to look at it, but then they left and never came back. And that was a common problem around, that, and people got a little frustrated because they said, look, they came here and assessed it, then they didn't come back. And I know we're doing the big areas, but if they could get the wires out of the trees, you know, then we could start cutting the things up and get them to the road.
That is an issue that the Public Works crews deal with every day.
Right, I know you do.
The limb is down, and there's power lines inside of it. The protocol that we follow is, we don't touch a limb or a tree that has power lines in it unless there's a city water light and power line crew at that spot.
And that's when I took Lake Services tree crew down there, and they said, we're not getting in it, not with the wires in it, they just won't. So it's frustrating, but...
Frustrating is a small word, sir.
Thank you for that. And you guys are doing a good job. I see the trucks flying around, so you're doing...
Well, it's a testament to the men and women that work for Public Works, they are highly dedicated professionals. This is hard, brutal work, and they're at twelve hours a day. They start at six-thirty in the morning, and they finish at six-thirty in the evening. As I said, we're running the equipment hard, maintenance is an issue, but everybody's working, everybody's doing their very best.
Thanks, Dave.
And we appreciate the support of everybody on the City Council.
Alderman Williams.
Yeah, so I wanted to bring back up the same question I asked Director Brown about the crews that were in the medium doing the weeds versus eliminating some of these big stacks, at least in Ward Three, I mean, we just got tons of them, because we had the older trees and all the breakup. I do commend you guys for getting them chopped up and placed and stacked, but then, like I said, when the constituents send them doing something like that, when I think those crews could be getting ready to stuff this on every other corner.
Well, the particular group that you're speaking with, speaking about are summer help. These are people who are not, they're only with us for the summer, and there is an extreme limit to what actions they can take. They can't wield a chainsaw, they can't drive a truck, they can't run a grapple, but they can water flowers and they can pick weeds. There was one full-time employee that was with them, driving the truck and supervising them. As soon as the summer workers finished their eight-hour shift, the full-time worker would then parks the truck, gets in the dump truck, and picks up and dumps debris.
So were these grownups, or were these teenagers, or when you say they can't do all those things?
They're summer help, sir, they're with us for the summer.
Age of the summer help.
But these particular individuals, I couldn't, I couldn't speak to it. But I checked with our supervisor today, excuse me, superintendent, to find out where we were deployed. We had a couple of concrete finishers who were working on a concrete job, but the only other unit that wasn't picking up debris and hauling it were the folks that were dealing with the flowers on Wabash today, and that's summer help.
Thank you, sir.
Alderman Carlson.
I think this question may be for Scott Doll. Scott, you don't escape all this, but I had two constituents, Ward Seven, call over the weekend about, and I know there was the golf tournament, they felt like they had called a couple hotels, and they felt they were getting gouged a little bit. So I don't know if you had any reports of that or can address that at all, but I just wanted to pass that on, on behalf of a couple constituents. I don't know the price of hotels, I haven't rented one in Springfield.
Well, I mean, I had not heard that, so this is the first I'm hearing of that, Alderman. I've certainly checked into that, I've been in constant communication with the Springfield Hotel Lodging Association. We have five hotels that are closed due to no power on South Dirksen Parkway right now, so that's really where our communication's been. So, you know, our average rate... So, you know, our average rate in the city has gone up in the last couple of years, I mean, we're averaging about $105 across the board, so again, you gotta take that all in consideration.
Yeah, they didn't, I asked what specific hotel, they gave me a rate over the phone of 300, that's from the constituency, I said, what did they ask? They go, well, they were asking 300, and then, you know, so, who knows? But I just wanted to pass it on.
Yeah, certainly at times, you know, the rates do fluctuate, and again, that's an average rate over, let's say, the course of the first half of the year, but, yeah, I will certainly check into that, and, you know, if they wanna call me as well, they can call me at the office, and we can have a conversation about it. Yep.
Okay, that's unfinished business, is there any new business to come before the council?
Yes.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm getting a couple text messages. So, on Saturday at 2:00 PM, I know they announced it earlier, but it just reminded me what Alderwoman Nutriano talking, that there's free produce boxes being given away at the YMCA, as well as too, with people not having power, they do have summer camp openings too, instead of having the kids at home, bring them on down to the YMCA on 4th and Carpenter, and there is financial assistance for those who need it. And then shifting over to tomorrow, it's music on the Y block. I missed my hosting last Thursday, but I'm glad we weren't out there, but please come out tomorrow from 4, I mean, from 6:00 until about 9:00, and then we have First Friday, this Friday too, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM, so please check downtown Springfield Inks page, and that's something that we can do while some people still don't have power. And I just wanna say, just thank you to all my colleagues, everybody has been really pitching in, we did about over 19,000 loads at All-in-One the past three days, and I get a little teary-eyed, because people really had a need for washing their clothes while they didn't have power. Our downtown businesses came together, brought barbecue pits out, and I was so happy I got to eat a steak. So, the community really came together in these last three days to help out, and so we're continuing to work together, and putting all attitudes aside, and it's really, really helpful to see that going on, so thank you.
And kudos to the YMCA, the YMCA opened their doors on Friday morning to be a cooling center and charge phones, and so RY really stepped up, and they even opened up on 4th of July for us, so that our citizens had a place to go, so the YMCA has really helped the community, so I just wanna give them a shout out. Now we have citizens to address the council, Jonathan Carter, are you here? Okay, we're gonna move on to Alice Ramey then. Not tonight, she says. Matt Shearer.
Madam Mayor, congratulations to you, council, thank you for having me here. I am here to propose that the city allow electric hydrofoil surfboards to be operated on Lake Springfield. If anyone has any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. Decatur has allowed us to do this, it is a municipally operated lake, my insurance, 1 million per occurrence, 3 million aggregate is good enough for them, I don't see where there is a disconnect between their operation and ours, I would love to answer any questions about any concerns, if anyone has any. I ask that you please allow these personal watercraft, as they are determined to be by, by the Coast Guard, and the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, to be operated by those who choose to use them on the lake, in a safe way. That's my piece.
Okay, looks like Alderman Rockford has signed up to speak.
Where would you have these at? Are they personally bought, and they store them at their house, or are they licensed with the city, is it licensed with the state, or they, I hear you say the Coast Guard, so, I know this issue was brought up back when I was out at the lake working, and I just, I think they need to be legalized, you know, for the city.
Sure.
Have we done all the paperwork and the groundwork?
I have. You, sir, are the only alderperson that I have not spoken with personally, I think everyone around the council can say that I have spoken to each of them, Corporation Council, you being removed, I have not spoken with you, but I think everyone around this table, horseshoe, here, except for you, I have spoken to each of them individually at length, they are probably tired of hearing about it, to be honest with you. But yes, they are registered, they, I have, I would love to speak with you after my two minutes, because I could go on waxing poetically about this for hours.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to talk to you at length.
Sure, if I'm allowed more than the two minutes, is there anyone after me that would like to speak?
2:30, 70 you guys.
Okay.
No, and again, I would like to get more information from you, we've talked about a little bit, but...
They are deemed to be personal watercraft, just like jet skis, wave runners, they are registered as such, I have personal liability insurance for them, I mean, you name it, I have US Coast Guard-approved life jackets, helmets, radios integrated into the helmets, so we can communicate on the water, we identify specific areas where we operate away from people, while we're teaching people how to ride these, that's what we do, I'm allowed to provide supervised instruction, I do not rent them, I do not give these to people to go wild on, I am there with them, side by side, that's how we do it, I have two surfboards, I take people out in specific areas away from other people, teach them how to ride these safely, I am American Heart Association certified CPR, I am also an EMTI intermediate certified by the state of Illinois, I have extensive certifications, if you would like to speak at length after this, I would love to talk with you, I think you might be the only one that doesn't have the full...
Well, I do understand it, you know, I've talked with security, I've talked to Alderman Redpath, I've talked to people around the lake, back when I was working out there, so you're gonna train these people, and then they're on their own after the fact?
No.
So, you're gonna be with them every time they take them out?
Absolutely, my insurance does not allow me to rent them, I have to be there with them, side by side.
So, you're the sole owner of these, these motorcrafts?
Yes, sir.
So, you're gonna rent them to them, and then you're gonna be...
No, I don't, I don't rent them, I provide supervised guided instruction in the safe operation of electric hydrofoil surfboards.
You can choose who gets them.
What's that?
Do they buy them?
No, no.
You own all these?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I own two surfboards, they come to me, I give them a lesson on how to operate them, I'm there side by side with them, if you'd like to, I'd be happy to give you a free one, you wanna try them?
We need video of this.
Yes, yeah. Open invitation to anyone around the horseshoe. Anyone who wants to try them, you know?
But no, I just, yeah, I'll get a number from me afterwards.
Sure, absolutely, and that's what I'm here to do, is surfing is now an Olympic sport, right? I think Doug Knight, I'm about to run out of time here, but Doug Knight is about to instill a wave facility at his location, surfing is coming, and I'm here to provide the safest way to learn how to do that. People can buy these craft, right? And just show up on Lake Springfield. What I'm trying to do is teach people how to safely operate them, before you get 20 people out there riding these things like crazy people, and crashing into boats, and whatever, and God knows what's gonna happen. That's what we would like to do, is provide a safe way for people to learn how to operate electric hydrofoil surfboards on Lake Springfield. Decatur says it's okay, we're good enough for them, it seems to be the same setup, if I'm not mistaken, Corporation Council might be able to chime in on this at a later date.
We have another Alderman who wants to speak to you, Alderman Hanauer.
I think that's the, you just mentioned it, that's the biggest problem, if we allow you to have them, we could get 20, 20 private people that have them, and whether they learn how to drop, ride them or not, they don't steer very well, and we have a hard enough time with the amount of boats on our lake, and I, I'll be honest with you, I was lake patrol out there, and I've got a lot of hours behind a boat, a boat down at Lake of the Ozarks, which is crazy, and they have them down there, and some of those idiots down there, they scare the crap out of you with, on those things.
I completely agree.
My concern is, if we allow you to do it, then it opens Pandora's Box, and then everybody can, you know, well, we let you do it, so this guy gets to buy one, and this guy gets to buy one, and then they're out there, and somebody's gonna get hurt. Our lake is, I just don't think it's conducive for these things, especially from, on a private sector, you know, from the private sector.
Or, if I may speak...
I mean, I'm not gonna sit here, I'm just telling you my point, I've seen them, they go fast as heck, and, I mean, Larry, me and you ain't getting up on one, I'll tell you that right now, there's no way.
And if, if I'm allowed to continue, there is nothing stopping anyone from buying these individually.
They can't come on the lake, we, they're not allowed on the lake.
They are not banned. I think Alderman Redpath proposed an amendment, but he pulled it, but these are determined to be personal watercraft, those are allowed on the lake currently. The Coast Guard has determined these to be personal watercraft.
No, they're not.
They gotta be licensed with the city of Springfield.
Mr. Shearer, can I, can I recommend that you make an appointment to see Corporate Council Mordock, or one of his associates in his office, if he's tied up, because we have him in every meeting with Aima and all the other groups we're meeting with regularly, so he could delegate if he needs to, and then they could get the information, so they could look into it.
Absolutely, and what is the best way to do that? Because I think, Madam Mayor, I emailed you...
Call Corporate Counsel's office.
Okay.
Call the Office of Corporation Counsel, I think you know how to get ahold of them.
Thank you.
Alderman Redpath, oh wait, no, sorry, I skipped, Alderman Williams, my apologies.
That arrangement's fine, thank you.
No, go ahead, you can go next.
No, I was gonna propose something like that.
Oh, you like that arrangement, gotcha. Yes, sir, Alderman Redpath.
Yeah, they're not be allowed on the lake, because CWLP has deemed them dangerous, there's a lot of accidents that happen out in the California area, and I can tell you that they're not here to speak on it tonight, because the director had to leave, but he has a whole file on it, we put together a committee and talked about this thing in depth before we even met with this Mr. Shearer, so I can just tell you that...
I think you left that meeting about five minutes in.
Well, listen.
Well, you have to address...
You've spread enough lies and rumors in this town, you attacked the director, you attacked me on personal, on social media, and so don't start lying, because I got people that were sitting in the room, okay? You did, you did talk to the Department of Natural Resources, which I was the director there once before, and I can tell you, they're not, they're not for this thing, they know it, they're classifying it as a personal watercraft, yes, but they're, they think it's as dangerous as we do.
You should lobby the Coast Guard to change that, then, I would recommend.
I'm not gonna argue with you, I'm gonna call...
Here's what we'll do, is there's new Alderman on the council, so we'll ask you again to make an appointment with Corporate Counsel's office, and then we can inform the new members of the council what was found through the ordinance, through this discussion, and through Director Brown, so...
Absolutely, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the regular city council meeting, so moved. Motion and second, oh wait, we have a citizen who wants to address the council, my apologies. Sorry, sir. Okay, sorry.
As Alderman Redpath said, I live on Lake Springfield, my name is Greg Vogt, I live at 1023 East Lake Shore Drive. Our power has been out since last Thursday, I've called numerous people, most of you may or may not know, the city doesn't really care about us, because we're CWLP, we rent our land, we're on lake leases, we can't cut trees down, we can't do anything without people's permission, so we have a tree that fell, big tree, hit a pole, took down about five other poles, we are sitting out there with no power, we are a neighborhood of 12 houses, eight of us are down, lot of old people, a lot of people that need help, but we're not gonna fall into your 3, 400, we only have 12 houses, but 66% of us are down, but yet nobody, nobody seems to be able to give us any accurate information, we have this website, you keep directing us to, my house has been a crew assigned since 3:33 on the 29th, so I have a crew assigned to fix it, yet nobody has been out there, except for Asflman, showed up on Sunday, they looked at it, there's wires in the tree, they said, well, they're not live, I don't know who Carl Tega is, they called Carl Tega with CWLP, and he said, well, if the wire isn't live, don't touch the tree. So, we still have a tree sitting in the front yard, with poles, transformers laying in our gully, nobody has come by and done anything, they cut the trees down at the park, Center Park is my neighbor, they were out there today, they removed the pavilion that blew down in the storm, they tore the whole thing down and hauled it away, they've cleaned up the parks, they've cleaned up the fishing walls, they cleaned up everything, they haven't touched anything in our neighborhood, it's disappointing, it's very disappointing, we don't need food, we don't need water, we need our air conditioning back, we need our houses back, I have a beautiful boat down the lake, I can't use it, because I don't have electricity to lower my lift, you put Rock the Dock back, you put all the infrons down there to get them fixed, I can't go to Rock the Dock, because I can't get my boat down, you know, what are you gonna do? I understand the people, I wish Doug Brown was still here, he's at our meetings all the time, I know they're out there working really, really, really hard, and I appreciate everything they're doing, but why, why, seven days after this, can't we get an answer?
So, he has hit a call at 7:00 in the evening to get on, so he got on, because we have three calls a day with his crews, so he can see in the morning, in the afternoon, and in the evening what's going on, we have approximately 5,000 customers without power, I hear you, I know you're concerned, and you're one of 5,000 about, and I am sorry, we're doing the best we can, sir, and I think you heard their talk today, the city water light and power, folks, we have more than double our crews here to help get power restored to our customers who do not have power, and there has not been an outage like this in 50 years, so I do apologize.
Xfinity is there, two to three times a day, the truck pulls up in front of our house to check, to see if the poles are back up, so they can re-mount their equipment. CWLP and the city cannot even call them and let them know what work they've done, they physically have check sheets, they come by, guys from South Bend, Indiana, guys from Chicago, guys are traveling from all over the place, but yet we can't communicate with any of them to get anything done, you know, I just don't know, you want us to leave and come to the BOS, we have no police presence, you say you've had five hundred dump trucks come by? They have, because they drive by my house every day going to lake services to drop all the trees off, but yet nobody comes by to do any security, anything, anybody who drives down East Lake Shore Drive sees that, I have no power, I have nothing there, I'm here today, because my kids are there.
We hear you, sir, I'll make sure that CWLP has 1023 East Lake Shore Drive on their list.
Oh, they do, but when are they gonna get there, Mayor?
Sir, I can't answer that, I wish I could.
Why can't you, after seven days? He said he has, you know, accurate information, we're not even on that list.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you, this is the mess I have inherited a little bit, Doug Brown asked for AMI readers, which would have expedited our process in the past, and they were not approved, this administration will get information to these council members, so they will see the cost of those AMI readers, those AMI readers allow city water light and power to see immediately who doesn't have power, because it's electronic, unfortunately, it is not right now, you all think it's advanced, but it isn't, so, I do apologize, it is a, I met with Senator Durbin this morning, and he said, Mayor, when the ice storm hit in the 1978, I was without power for 10 days, he said, this is unfortunately what happens, so I understand and I feel your pain, and we're doing the best we can.
When you get on and you have news conferences, I don't know if you guys know, we don't have power, so we can't see any of that, nobody comes by our houses, you know, Redpath has given me calls back, but even he's starting to avoid me, because he has no answers to give.
I don't think he's avoiding you.
Oh, he is. I will give one shout-out to Ethan, Ethan, in my time of distrust, took my phone call, and he actually called me back, the information he gave me wasn't the best, he told me my power would be back up by last Sunday night, and I'm still without it today, so, I just, I'm frustrated, and I know you, everybody in here's trying hard, everybody in here's doing a good job, but your information is 1970, and it's 2023, I don't trust any of the information, because I am a computer person, I could go into that system, and I could make it look like 2,000 people are down, or 20,000 people, so how many people are actually down? We were in here, it went up 1,000 people in five minutes, so what's accurate, what's not? I don't, you know, I just don't know, and I'm frustrated, because it's, you know, everybody's sitting in an air-conditioned house with the TV working, and...
Not everybody, there's 5,000 people with you.
Well, 4,100 and something, if you, I mean, according to the last time I looked.
I understand, sir, and we will work on it.
Yeah, so I just think you guys need to understand, you know, where the other end of it is, I mean, we pay a lot of taxes, we pay our bill every month, let's get it fixed.
We're trying, sir. Anyone else wanna address the council? Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Second.
First and a second, I'll do some favor. Aye, please, thank you. We adjourn.